Alrighty, I want to welcome everybody to the September 2nd, 2025 Jenkins City Council Meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll please?
Karen Stain.
Here.
Jeff. Sean.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Quinn.
Here.
Garnet.
Here.
Alrighty, if y'all stand, we'll go into pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, you've got the August minutes in your packet. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Not entertain a motion to approve them yet.
I'll make that motion, I'll say it.
Alright, we're gonna move quick tonight, I can tell. Got a motion there, second?
Second.
Alright, have a motion second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Alrighty, financial reports, in your packet also?
What was the property standard here that we had for sixteen thousand?
That was probably two of the cameras. Rick asked me the same thing, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that's probably what's in. We're gonna separate that out.
Okay.
And track that, once we get done.
I'll make a motion. That could do anything. I'll say it.
Alright, have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Alrighty, Lisa, we're down to you, and if you need to leave after this, you can get back.
Um, have a lot in your report. Um, we have a meeting, progress meeting today for the city hall renovation project is at forty-seven percent complete. They started some ramped tile on first to back, or the elevator ship says being delivered October. Other than that, unless y'all have questions?
Well, there's questions. There's a lot going on, but that's where we're at, as far as benchmarks and meeting goals, but uh, what else do we have? I mean, as far as, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, you're fine.
We go through this in the update meeting, we're doing the update meeting every two.
Um, we also have an update meeting, actually, we have progress meeting. Um, the Jenkins revitalization was due into plan. I did find out, we'll wait to procure until we get all the interim cure. So, we do have to procure for that. Um, wastewater treatment plan improvements, we discussed that. Um, the INI replacement phase two, you know, which we'll seek and some funding, but the original INI, you know, Brad, has just expanded the CCTV and all that. Also found out that the LETP was for tasers.
Okay.
So, it was for tasers. Um, we worked it on interim materials from a few things. Um, the Elkhorn Lake, we got the dam flood risk reduction. Once that one invoice is paid, I can do that reimbursement. Is there anything in particular you want?
No, just what you can think of. Actually, there's so much going on, it's hard to try to remember all of it, but there is a lot of, there's a lot of projects getting ready to come together, all of it.
Yes, the city park renovations, we have submitted everything for that to National Park Service, and I'm waiting to take her back from Pamela, who might be CLG.
Yeah.
I'm waiting to hear back from her on that. Um, and then trail development, like I said, I talked with Lisa Towns and try and use that stuff to move it as well.
But you already looked at the list of everything that's going on in Leicester.
We've been, once before, we had a generator, we were looking for it. The switch here, I don't know.
The transfer switch.
Yeah, the automatic transfer switches for more than just that project. They have been on back order, about one that's not coming in until November. That's not this, these, but they're all, I'll have to check specific dates for that. But I can find out specific dates of when we're expecting them to be in a few months.
On this, Jenkins City Police, the law enforcement protection grant, like, how long does that usually take typically? Cause I've seen that it's been on note that it's submitted typically.
Those, honestly, I'm not familiar with those, cause I don't do those a lot.
Okay.
Um, Donna could probably say anymore, she does more of those than I do.
Okay, alright, thank you.
We talked about that this morning, tasers is one of the biggest things we've got. Tasers is like DVD players, lay up and grab them. Time you get one, and the technology has changed a little bit more, so we're just making sure of that. And I, uh, we've got one in, I feel like we're gonna get another police vehicle.
Yeah.
We first got an email, said that program's run out, sorry about your luck, but then.
Good luck.
We started, yeah.
A little bit, not even a month ago, was it?
Yeah.
They're saying, get your paperwork in, they got money, yeah.
Wow, so, we're hoping to get that one in. Anyway, we appreciate cred and everything they do, there's lots of stuff behind the scenes that nobody knows about. There's stuff that we've applied for that I forgot we applied for.
Yeah, anytime y'all have questions, if it's not me, Donna will, we can get answers for you. Lisa?
Alrighty. Harold?
Yes, sir.
You got some kind of report? I should've, I should've said.
You took care of it.
I know, I know. And I'm not sure I like the color of the tile back there, but we'll figure it out.
You were the one that picked it up. You were the one picked it up.
Alright. Anyway, along with that, the elevator ship's supposed to be delivered October the twenty-ninth, and it.
And it's still on cranks, what they want to.
Yeah, and then hopefully by Christmas, the first year, we may have a little open house or something, and be able to move upstairs and spread out a little bit, so. Stuff's moving. Alrighty. Into your packet. We got payday requisition certificate number seven for the ADE.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lisa. And if y'all found it, or I found it, how much is it?
Twenty-three and a half million.
Yeah, we're forty-seven percent complete, and uh, that's Gilf and cred admin, they don't have anything right now in this, but for engineering and. So, I'd entertain a motion to.
I'd like to ask, what are you, payday requisition certificate number seven?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All, same sign. And did ER send anything?
Yes, it's right behind that.
Uh, site inspections from twenty-twenty-five are complete. Some sites need to be looked at again, we run into some issues and. Really, we had an inspector that was taking an incredibly long time, and we wore, I said, wrong home, we'll.
Yeah, a lot of sites that they examined.
Yeah, and it's just the long roads, and we washed out the side of the road, and washed out debris and stuff like that. It's, they were trying to group all them together, but the inspector come in and was trying to train us on survey one, two, three, when he wasn't really trained on survey one, two, three, and anyway.
And they said he's on topic, and we're never gonna come back and start working on the guardrails?
Well, that's state, I don't have a why, I don't have a date. That's like everything else, they put it out, and you've got a site here, here, and here, and they'll come and do this one, and then they move down and do the other one, then they come back later and do it, it just depends on contracts and when the contract was led, so. We can find out about that. And the RFPs for road and cover repair will be published next week, so they'll put out proposals, but. And that's all online, if anybody from home is wondering how to do it, you can go to ERC's website, and uh, they handle all that for us. Alrighty, now's a good time, any to introduce Kelly and Sarah. They're with DCMC, and I want them to stand up and say a little bit about whatever.
We just want to talk, actually.
Just talk, just talk, just come back here down in the strawberry fields.
Thank you very much, room. So, my name is Kelly George, as the mayor said, I'm with DCMC partners, and uh, this is Sarah Bulker. And we are here to hold the kickoff meeting for one of two projects that are existing in the city. One of them, the one we're gonna kick off in the morning, is the U.S.D.A. development. Um, and so, we just want to come by and say hi, and say, here's our faces. We are real people, I promise. And just see if y'all have any questions, any concerns, uh, before we get rockin' and rollin' here.
And the two they're working on, one is the storm water, which I'm really excited about getting, because it's a little.
That's what we're kicking off tomorrow. Yeah, that's what we're kicking off tomorrow.
And that'll get that going, uh, and then the other one is Phase Six Water, which is our last phase of all the water projects, which ties to the high ground site, so they were able to secure funding for the final phase, based on being able to get water to them.
Thank you.
Sure, that's, thank you very much.
Yeah, so, those two good projects.
Didn't we figure in that the drainage there in the middle of town with the storm water?
They're gonna look at everything downtown, and that's one of the.
That's the number one.
I, I think it will, maybe not directly, but it will definitely, it should definitely help, so. Um, but, but the first part of that project is gonna be feasibility, so definition, because we've got kind of a general scope right now, because none of that feasibility, H and H has been done specifically to that site yet. So, once we get that narrowed down, then we'll be able to move into true design development, and then our homeowners isn't in construction, hopefully, like when our rules come next year, hopefully. So, we're gonna push this one through, because it needs to be done for the next three seasons, if all possible.
So, what does that include? Does that stream dredging or anything like that, or?
So, the truth is, we don't know yet. We know what the problem is, we know some possible ways to solve it, but until, um, the actual feasibility's done, we're not gonna know what a specific solution needs to be, and specifically where the solutions need to happen. So, we, for the purposes of getting the money, we tried to keep it pretty broad to a level four of a myriad of different approaches, if that's what needed to happen, rather than having to pin down to a specific solution, and then turns out that wasn't the right one. Or there was an opportunity to address other related issues, right? So, we were intentionally as broad as we could be when we were seeking the money, so.
Now, I'll give y'all the same opportunity I did Lisa, if y'all need to get back to the motel and rest, if you wanna stay for the rest of the entertainment, that's.
I mean, Mayor, as much as I love a good city council meeting, especially when you get into the financial reports, because those are my favorites, I think we'll go. Cause we'll see you in the morning.
Yeah, that's ten o'clock in the morning.
Yes, and there's a agenda. You do have, um, from Robin, the additional bank account that needs to be opened for U.S.D.A., right? On your agenda? Excellent, that's all I ever care about.
Third one hundred new business.
Okay, Sarah cares about the money.
Now, as they're leaving, they sent a whole lot of those resolutions we gotta read, so.
Now, the stuff you had to read, you can just lay it part.
Right.
Yeah, if you had to read it between for me, if it's dollars and cents.
At least, what, sixteen, maybe?
I have no idea, she's got files, and a couple files, and notes on top of those.
Well, see, you try, and thank you.
Thank you, be careful. Thank you, I'll be coming out there.
Y'all know it?
Yes, thank you. Y'all have a good one.
I'm just gonna tell them. Now, we're gonna look heavy at set of the removal, and try and clean up as much as we can. It has to be a study, that's how we got the money, is to look at all of it, but I'll be with them and saying, just look at this, so. What can we get out of streams, try to, you know, to help it, yeah, it's not the.
But at the same time, that's pretty more important than the type of meeting, then?
Well, right now, what's more important is it coming through the park, and going through the Dollar General, and going to the post office, and all the other things they did before, so they're looking at everything from the damn house, uh, and then we've got the, the USG, that's stream data to match up to with rain totals. So, once we get through with this, we should be able to grade ourselves on it. We can take two inches of rain before and see what stream level come up, and then after we get done with what work we're doing, same two inches of rain should be a little less, but they don't like it when I mention that stuff, of course.
Well, they have to figure it, understand it, and see if they understand what we want.
Well, it is, and it's, it just depends on where the rain is, if it is on this hill, it just, and it's, you, it's just a potluck where it's gonna show up at, so. But yeah, there's, that's part of it, in this piece down here, is that in the, the number two bottom, those upsides of that drain down there, and then I've got two or three hills picked up, and showing different problems we've gotten, and see what they can do there, actually. Cause one of the things is water coming off these hills, is what takes the side of the road out, and every time it takes the side of the road out, you know.
Yeah, and every time it rains, it seems like it gets worse.
Yeah, so it's, I'm excited about the project, cause it's, they figured for five point two million, or whatever it is, we could fix every problem in Jenkins, and I think it just gives us a good start, but it gives us a study that, that we can go back to and then find additional funding and mitigation money, hopefully later on. Alright, budget amendment two-six-two-C, second reading.
Ready?
Yeah.
Uh, budget amendment number two-six-two dash C, second reading of budget amendment order is number two-six-two dash C, meaning the city of Jenkins budget for the fiscal year in June thirty of twenty-twenty-five, including on budgeted receipts from FEMA funds in the amount of ninety-seven thousand dollars, and increasing expenditures in the area of FEMA properties. Receipts from property sales, brands camper homes, grants in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, and increasing expenditures in the area of revenue funds. Receipts from the nation opioid funds in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and increasing expenditures in the area of opioid funds. Receipts from cable grant for equipment in the amount of three thousand nine dollars, and increasing expenditures in the area of channel ninety-nine. Receipts from the housing grant for customers for utilities and taxes in the amount of eight thousand fifty dollars, and increasing expenditures in revenue funds and utility revenue funds. Receipts from water utilities in the amount of eleven thousand sixty-seven dollars. Receipts from solid waste utilities in the amount of thirty-five thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars, and increasing expenditures in the area of utility revenue funds. We'll be on that city council meeting September second, twenty-twenty-five, at the Jenkins City Hall, seven o'clock P.M. Copy the orders with full text, is available for public inspection at the office of city clerk during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, eight A.M. through four o'clock P.M.
That is a second reading, so I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Already have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, same sign. Uh, twenty-twenty-five motor vehicle tax rate, and I had Robin run some numbers based on that. We go from point three-one to point three-oh, nine-nine-nine. Uh, it, approximately, it changes every year, uh, with different rates, it's about eleven hundred dollars per year. So, and then, uh, but from one and a half to two percent on payroll taxes, would on average, would be between sixty-five and seventy thousand.
So, we create seventy thousand, and lose seven hundred.
That's a pretty good math.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll make a motion, we drop to two point three-oh, and raise the occupational to two percent, I guess that's a, the new, the same. And that's common sense, we're gaining seventy thousand and losing seven hundred, and putting some money back into people in Jenkins's pocket. Spread the wealth a little bit, just more than people in Jenkins.
We probably need to do that separate, don't we, Randall? To do the.
Yeah, you can, I can.
Okay. Webb, you wanna make a motion to go from point three-one, nine-nine, to point three-zero, nine-nine for the motor vehicle tax?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Alright, have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Alright, now, you wanna make a motion on the one and a half to two percent payroll tax increase?
I'll make that motion, sixty-five, seventy thousand, you order?
I have to put a definite date on that, because it's not automatic, like motor tanks.
We'll do January first, beginning of the year.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Whatever, yeah, I'll make a motion, those are basically one-four-five, two percent, and January first.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll vote no on that.
I'll vote no.
Okay, motion passes. Alrighty. Let me throw one in here, before I forget it, um, with the Raven Rock project up here, they have to do what's called a HERO. It's a environmental review online, and to do that, they need a responsible entity. And the city would be the responsible entity, and I'd be the contact person. And what it's for is for people that wants to send comments or questions about the environmental review of it. They would come to the city, and the EK Heritage has to have a responsible entity to do it.
They already done a study at that, probably?
They, different places, just different parts of it, they're just, they're working on the cabin part right now, they've got the architects secured, we're designing the water sewer up there, they're getting ready to procure architects for the meeting center and restaurant, or whatever, uh, that that turns into, so, but before they can do any construction, they have to have this, uh, and it's sort of different. We do environmental views all the time, but this one, it's an environmental review online, and they need a responsible entity, I was wanting to see if you all.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, you can do it. Got a motion on being the responsible entity for the Raven Rock project? Got a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Alrighty. Now, we need to approve the USD ARD, and I don't remember what WDIP stands for, but anyway, it's, it's the bank account for the Phase Six, which is our final phase of water, getting all the water lines replaced that we've, we've got, it takes the water to the high ground site. And this is a requirement from RD, that we have this separate banking account, which is, it's good to keep it separate, but it's, it's hard to track all of it sometimes.
So, you just need a motion?
Yeah, I just need a motion for us to open that bank account. Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, same sign. Alrighty. Okay. Jenkins Cheerleading Roblox Request for September thirteenth, and we've also got one in for Dance Caves for October fourth.
Pretty complex.
I'll make that motion, except the Roblox, for the thirteenth and the fourth.
Alright, a motion there, a second?
I'll say it.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alrighty, while you're all thinking, if we got anything you wanna come up with. First, and I always wanna say this, I wanna thank Jamie for being here and covering these, and getting it so people can watch it, uh, and also covering the festival and everything else goes on, so we don't thank him enough, cause he's the one man TV crew, he finds the underwriters, and helps keep all that stuff going, so.
You'd be amazed how many people do watch this.
Yeah, I, somebody, I run into it loads, they said, oh, you're right, yeah, and, but evidently, it's carried over Virginia, ain't it?
Well, I'll share you, one of those Leslie County ballgame, the unit comes up, he says, Sean, how's everybody in the gym? I'm sitting there looking, I said, what? He said, oh, I watched the channel, I seen you on the city council meeting, I said, oh, my bad, didn't have to believe who it was.
Well, that's.
Did you get my address?
And, uh.
Two dollars today, yeah.
Yeah, and before I forget, I wanna thank the festival committee, cause they work all year long, and it's, it's sort of a thankless thing, and there's a lot of, uh, different ideas and things that they think can do different, and would be glad to hear those, but they do work all year long to get up with the T-shirts, and to get up with the bands, and to get the contracts out for the food booths, and the inflatables, and all that stuff, so I wanna thank Joanne and all those folks that, uh, that pulls all that together, along with the fire department, police department in April, that gets everything ready, and gets their brochure put together. And that's about all I got, I mean, just stay tuned, it's, these projects are starting to come in faster than, than people can keep up with them, but we're trying our best. We had a five meeting scheduled this morning, and then the contractor showed up for a meeting, he has to reschedule and threw everything off, so. We jumped in the meeting and got it all done, but we've got a lot of engineers, a lot of, uh, funding sources that's, that's really pulling for everything we got going on, and we've got a lot of stuff happening, and I said, we're rebuilding Jenkins, uh, so Phase Six, we'll get all the water lines lined up, so now we're working on storm water, and the INI, and the wastewater treatment plant, uh, will get us a far ahead on the shoreline. And it is not sexy, and it never makes the news when you've got water all winter long in other communities, if not, but you can be proud of the outside crew and the boys at the water plant that keeps all that flowing too, so. Well, that's all I got, if y'all got anything tonight?
I'd just like to tell everybody, we got a police officer graduated September eleventh from the cabin, first one in the law next week, so that's a big deal for us.
Yeah, he passed his last two tests today, so it's, uh, it's coming in soon.
Did a part-time policeman, one of them, become full-time?
He, we're working on that right now, it's, I hope that's what we do.
Uh, one thing we do need, and happened today again, is we need to look at the ambulance service possibility here. You know, there was a run today, ten minutes after the first initial call, they just let five for ER come this way. That's not, I mean, it's not their fault, but we need better service.
Yeah, that's a tough one, we've looked at it over the years, several times, about us doing it, and Prestonsburg had what I thought was the ideal situation, they had public safety people, which was police and fire, to where they had twenty or thirty people, and even with that staffing, they could make it go.
Keep us good.
And from ambulance service, what I know about it is, is most of the money is in these transfers and things, and you gotta have ambulances run that. And if we had one ambulance that is staffed, and it was on a transfer, you know, but yeah, I agree, I mean, I've thought about it, I can think of it.
The compromise is, and this brought up in the actual promise to the city many years ago, that, uh, when we lost our last ambulance service, me on proposed staging one of theirs here, and we've got a place to do it, and let's see if we can open up that conversation, and see if they will do that. Uh, and that would, cause this is probably a better place to get out and serve the county, at least on this end, and, you know.
They have one in White'sburg. They have one staged in White'sburg.
Well, maybe we can. Does the city pay for that, or? Well, we hadn't really, uh, talked like that, you know, we, there was that point, we, we could've provided an ambulance for it. Maybe we could do that through a brand, and then provide a place to put it, and then they provide the personnel, you know, I don't know if they.
Well, I'm sure Carter talked to us.
There's ways to do that, and, you know, that'll benefit both of us.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's tough to make any kind of money with it, and keep them going, because it's, when, we talked about it once before, in where Prestonsburg, he said, you need to really look at this, cause we tried every way we could with what they had, but trying to work together, we can, and there may be a spot on industrial park too.
Everything, that's a twenty-four-seven?
Well, yeah, they man them twenty-four-seven, but you never know, they gotta run here, run there, and two or three runs back up, and.
And that's what it does, they were on a run, gotta call, and they have to deliver somebody to ER, and then come there.
Yeah, and then, but the fire department here does, is we've got first responders, so they usually try to page us out to go and get started with whatever they need, you know, if it's AD, or if it's a diabetic emergency, whatever, they start it then, and get them packaged up, so when they do get there, they can go with them.
To my, I mean, there's a lot of people here qualified to be on the ambulance, you know, we're just the people on our fire department. We just don't have an ambulance.
Well, we can, we can have a conversation with Carter, and maybe we can invite him to the next council meeting, and see if.
Well, I mean, we just open a communication line and see if there's any way that can.
They have to be stressed to the max, they're the only show in town.
Yeah, it's, it's personnel's a lot of it too, just finding the people that qualify.
What about, um, Letcher, or they're not gonna reopen that ambulance service?
What about um, Letcher, or they're not gonna reopen that ambulance service or?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
I think they're barely up or something.
Yeah, it's uh...
They're out of business.
I mean, they're not running any ambulances, but it's...
Yeah. Alrighty, I've entertained that final motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
All those in favor say bye.
Bye.
Bye, thank you all.